This conference will now be recorded.
That wasn't me, that was the software. So these two arrows will switch you.
That was me.
Okay. And then you know you can mute, but you're the first one in line.
Can we mute, Bob?
Yep.
Okay, new business. Bailey Brook Leo Drive Open Space and Recreation Project. We have a presentation this evening.
Yeah.
You're muted, right? That's it.
Hey Trevor, how are we gonna present this?
I am gonna give you the screen. You got, do you have a computer, John, that you're on?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna make you a presenter.
Okay.
Which I just did. Now the screen's gonna be yours. So basically at the bottom of the screen, you're gonna have a thing that gives you the shared screen option, right?
All right. Let me know what you see.
Right now I just see a go to meeting screen.
Oh, so you have to drag it to the other side.
There you go.
Getting there. All right. Okay. Um, so this is Leo Drive Recreation Facility. Um, off of Leo Drive. And ordering on Bailey Brook.
Introduce yourself, please, for the rec.
Thank you. Yeah, this is John Allard, Austin O'Neill. Um, I'm a landscape architect and project manager for the design and engineering of Bailey Brook Recreation Facility here.
Thank you very much. Go on.
Okay. So I guess we'll go over a little overview of where the facility is located. Um, north is to the right side of the screen, we have Bailey Brook to the west of the property. Um, Clark Street is on the south and Leo Drive is on the east, which is on the bottom of the screen. Um, some major items to look at here. Um, the wetlands, uh, which are mainly against Bailey Brook. There's a few wetlands on site, those will come up a little bit later in our presentation. I have some arrows pointing to certain areas, or major design areas of the park. Um, on top, there's a, gonna be a proposal to overlook into Bailey Brook Wetlands. Uh, in the middle of the pages, left picture there, shows a lay down area for some cutting, um, wood harvesting gone on, and then a picture on the bottom, which is Leo Drive. Uh, is the access from Leo Drive. So this graphic is showing kind of the overall extent of the design. Um, most of the work will be conducted in the areas that you see as natural turf fields, parking area, and the play trail. Um, but this of the property will consist of hand cleared trails. These spaces right now are mainly foot paths have been developed over time with residences and people walking in sidewalks and such in that area. Sorry for the motorcycles in the background. Um, so, and then, so I mentioned, this is the core area of the park where most of the work is going to be conducted. Um, you can see a 24-foot wide access drive coming from Leo Drive right across from our go way. This access drive, um, and parking area will be gravel. Um, and we have a concrete wall coming in from Leo Drive as well. So, um, the main parking area of the site uh, holds about 85 spaces, and then the parking area, the arm of the parking area to the east of the play fields there. Um, approximately 60 parking spaces. And the cool thing about this parking area is that those fields are depressed, about five to six feet. Uh, so there's a slope, there's a slope down to the fields which kind of act as a natural bleacher area. Uh, people can watch the games from their cars. Um, so that's kind of a cool feature of this, uh, field here. They are proposing a landscape buffer in between the residences. Um, off of the main parking area. I think I can use my hand here. Um, there's a rain garden that'll collect some storm water. There are also two more rain gardens. There's a rain garden here that collects, um, water coming from a slope down this way. Um, and another rain garden on the north side of the larger field. Uh, this is collecting water that would accumulate because the field, as we have proposed, is crowned and it will be draining out, uh, east and west. Um, which will create little spots at the bottom of the slope. So we have a few yard drains that catch and go into the rain garden. Uh, the play field. Um, this is shown of a soccer field. I show two soccer fields here, they, they're just general recreational fields. I just wanted to show more scale what, what these, um, uh, fields were. Uh, the, the, the larger field is a high school, like some soccer field size. And the, um, smaller field is a typical under 10 soccer field size. Uh, what's cool about the, uh, the larger field is that if you run, uh, say you have a soccer league going on, you can split this larger field into three soccer, uh, games at one time, and you can have a fourth going on over here. Uh, to the west of the parking area, uh, we're going out what we are deeming a play trail. Um, in lieu of a large playground structure, we thought that this type of play area would fit kind of the, uh, area, sorry, where there's a little bit more climbing equipment, um, swings, um, but no large structure. So there's just little, uh, units, um, of equipment. Each, each unit is specific to a certain, um, environment, uh, subject. Uh, one could be honeybees, the other could be butterflies, and there's, that goes along each, uh, area. We do show a restroom, kind of in the center of the site here. Um, which we are still planning on whether it will be, um, plumbed, composting, et cetera. Um, there is a proposed accessible walking path around the field. Um, it would come into the walking area here. The cool thing about this is that it's a third of a mile around the, around the fields and, and if you're coming out of the area, um, you know that three times around, you, you walked, you walked a mile while it was on the soccer field or playing frisbee or what have you. I did speak real quickly about the wetland overlook area on the previous graphic. This is what we're proposing, a temper structure, not necessarily the binoculars center, but maybe include some and educational signage, you know, what wouldn't have it, you know, what, what, uh, amphibians or mammals or whatever are in this area, some sort of educational signage. Um, and, you know, there's a wetland, stuff like that. And I believe that is it. I just want to mention that, um, this project is going to be phased. Um, we do have a, a park grant for the complete design of the park, but it will be constructed in phases. So as part of phase one, we would be including the access drive in some Leo Drive. Not necessarily the whole parking lot, but maybe a bay of parking. Um, and then we would install the, the accessible walking trail area. We'll, we'll do some grading of the field, not necessarily putting the field in first, but get the necessary grading down and and the walk, uh, the walking trails around, um, as well as the other walking trails. There is a, not shown, there's a one mile that is also part of this project. Um, so, so as phase one, the construction would be the access on the parking area, the accessible loop, and then the trails, um, out back. And I believe that's.
This is Trevor. Where, where does that, where does that one loop, the one mile loop trail go? Can you show with your pointer on?
Yeah. So the one mile loop, uh, kind of hugs down closer to Bailey Brook. Uh, and then, and then comes back out this way. Do you see my cursor movement?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so it's, it's down by Bailey Brook, and it comes back out that way.
And John, could you explain a little more play area? You did center, you, you concentrated on that one spot to the left. I know there's different areas for different age groups.
Yeah. So like I had mentioned, rather than doing the larger play structure, each, each, um, area is focused on a certain age group, a certain, um, kind of theme. Uh, there'll be a couple of areas that are designated just to hot lot, um, aged group, which is three to five years old, and then another, uh, two areas that are kind of five years old and plus. Um, the, what you see as the brown areas will be a, either multi-area, rubberized surface, saying some sort of flat play area. The outer loop, uh, just a walking loop that kind of connects all of the areas together. And, and equipment here, we have shown, um, you know, we have some climbing equipment, there's some swings, there's a balance log that you can crawl through, up and over. Um, and then you can, some signage, uh, each, each area will have a sign that's, um, dedicated to, uh, say, the, the B5. Uh, here's a B5 structure, climbing, the, um, and some other equipment. And each one of these play areas will have a, a sign dedicated, uh, information, a sign that's educational for each of them.
Mr. Allard, this is Mark Schafer on the Planning Board Chairman. You spoke of the landscape buffer. Could you describe, uh, you know, its composition, its size, particularly along that horizontal part of the parking lot there? That's to the rear of the house lots?
Sure.
Composition, dimensions, and so forth?
Yeah, so it'll be a natural buffer, it'll be some evergreen trees. Um, mostly evergreen trees that'll grow big. Um, and then a little mix of deciduous trees, some small flowering trees, but, but no real shrubs. Uh, mainly big, uh, evergreen trees. And on the, again, the buffer on the west side of the field is just kind of, uh, to protect balls maybe going down. Um, that could be more of a, a shrub heavy buffer, but against the residents, we're thinking, you know, fir, spruce, um, pine, stuff like that, some larger specimens, evergreen trees, with a mix of some buffer species uh, that are deciduous flowering trees.
And is there gonna be any lighting in those parking areas, or is this a dawn to dusk sort of thing?
Going back and forth on that. At this time.
Dawn to dusk. Bond to dusk.
Bond to dusk? Got it.
Okay, so there will be no lighting in the parking lots at night?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're not proposing any lighting, but if the city, you know, wants to put lighting in at some point in time in the future, I mean, I think we're gonna stub electricity. If we're gonna bring sewer and wires to the site for the restroom facility, um, we'll probably end up stubbing electricity to the site too, in case the city wants to enter future debt.
Okay.
Yeah, and then one, one thing I didn't mention was the utilities to the site right now. Um, there are all utilities needed out on Leo Drive, so water, um, sewer, and electric will come from Leo.
Any questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Trevor.
Yes, please.
Before any of the board members ask any questions, I just want to give a, a quick history of the project. I know John did a good job with overviewing, you know, what we're currently working on, but, um, you know, dating back to 2017, when the city initially applied for two different grants with the state to acquire the Bailey property. Um, part of a, a larger, um, open space project that reaches up into the Alasaska property, down through the, um, Fishing Gun property to protect the Wobbling Stream Bailey Brook. Um, we use a two different funding sources for, for a purpose. Uh, the western portion, on the western side of Bailey Brook, was purchased with a land grant, which only allows you to purchase land for open space in perpetuity. So that portion of land on that side of the Brook can only be used as open space. Um, we used the park grant to, um, acquire the land, the other portion, the 30 or plus or so acres that we're seeing here on the east side of Bailey Brook, behind the Leo Drive residences, um, purposely so we could actually utilize it for more active recreation purposes. Um, in 2018, or actually 2019, we'd applied for the current park grant that we're using now for this conceptual design. And, um, and the first phase of build out, which includes access to the site and, you know, roughed out parking area, um, cleaning of some of the existing trails, creation of a new one mile loop, and the creation of that accessible walking path. Um, that's the only work that's gonna be done in phase one. In the future, if the city decides to move forward with this concept or some other concept like this, then we'd have to apply for additional funding. We'd have to get additional approvals through the city because the city will have to get, will have to come up with funding of their own to match the state grants. So, yeah, that's, you're probably talking three to four to five years down the road for different phases of this project to really take hold, including the play, the play park area. Um, there was mentioned by some of the residents for a basketball court, which I think is a great idea. Um, we're gonna try to incorporate something like that into it before we finalize it, but that's, um, um, something we're looking at. Um, but I just wanted to mention that this is a, it's a citywide project. The city, you know, purchased the property for, to meet, to meet the demands of what the city's open space recreation needs are, which are pretty much on the open space recreation plan. Um, and tonight, we're just asking the planning board, um, to vote to either approve or not approve of that plan, um, that's presented to you and, and in front of you. And again, the city will kind of determine how it moves forward on the build out of the site, how many phases, what actually happens, what gets in future, in future years.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Are there any questions from board members? Or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, phase one is, it's including access road, a walking trail, and a, the parking lot. Is that correct, Trevor? Is that what we're saying for phase one?
Yeah, it's, uh, yes. However, it's not the parking lot you see in front of you right now. It's not gonna be finished parking with sidewalks, and it's gonna be a gravel base, no islands, pretty, pretty much just roughed out so people can actually access the trail system on the site initially.
Yeah, I can tell you also, Mr. Chairman, I was brought up on Leo Drive in the early 70s. And back then, there was probably only 14 houses on Leo Drive. And probably only 12 houses on Clark Street, you're talking from Ryan Street to Fishing Gun. And, uh, now you look at Leo Drive, Clark Street, Brookside, Fernwood, it's probably the most populated area in the city. And I think these people do deserve a place for them to have a recreational area to, to go to and enjoy themselves, they don't need to travel that far. So I do approve this phase one anyway, to get going on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from board members? Steve?
At this point, no, all good.
Okay. All right, while this is not a public hearing, what I would like to do is see if there are any questions on this project from members of the public in attendance. And here is how this works. If you're in the go to meeting and you would like to ask a question, use the chat icon on the upper right-hand side of the top bar. Looks like a little talk balloon from a comic book. On that, enter your name and your street address, and I'll call on you in the order received. Give it a couple minutes and see if there's any questions. So a brief timeout. All right, sir, I'm probably going to butcher your name, but it's Steve McCowiak from 244 Leo Drive, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, ask your question, sir.
Sure, so, uh, one point, um, that really wasn't in the question about the, the buffer, it's only 30 feet. So to the, to the driveway, or to the parking lot. Uh, so that, that is a concern. But my, my question becomes, is about when did sports fields come in, or any type of sports complex come into play in this idea, since in September 2019, it was presented as an all-natural park?
Uh, I cannot answer that question, can you, Trevor?
I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself and I had to scroll up to get there. So, um, the recreation fields, I think, were, there, there has been talk with recreation fields from day one, um, since we started this project. Um, and the, um, the first time we see it on paper on a plan is now. And so we've never had anything sketched out on site. There was talk definitely about nature trails and having it as a natural setting. Um, however, there was, you know, we have been, we've known about the need for soccer fields. We updated the open space and recreation plan, I think, uh, five or six years ago. And, um, it was identified there is a need. There was, um, talk of a park going in somewhere in this area for the best part of, I think, you know, the past 10, the plus, 10-plus years. Since this development, you know, Brookside Drive, Leo Drive, and this failed development that we ended up buying for this open space, um, has been, over the, over the years of it being built out. Did I answer your question, Steve?
Well, since I attended the first meeting in September, this type of plan was not, uh, presented when Jeff was speaking. And since I've lived on Leo Drive for 28 years and was part of all of the first development meetings as well, when the gentleman was, from Hubbardston, was looking to put a development in. Um, so many people here, the first they heard was about, uh, what the original developer was supposed to do with a playground. Nobody even had a clue about that. So there's multiple things going on that many people that abut, that directly abut this property have not known, Mr. Bogart.
I will say that, you know, there, we didn't have the resources to put, uh, you know, a comprehensive plan together at the initial meeting that we had. And I think that was just for the, the grant. However, the ideas that were given to the, within the grant application are what you see now on, on this plan. So, and, and it's not, we're not trying to hide anything behind anybody's back. This is what we've envisioned from the, not necessarily, you know, the two fields or, you know, this is something I think our engineers had a part, a part in, trying to maximize the area for recreation. This, again, these are ideas. So, you know, whether they happen or not down the, down the line, it'll be up to the city to really figure that one out. Including the residents in the area.
Well, I, I would like to suggest a meeting with residents that directly abut to get an idea if this would be an acceptable type of area for them, because, um, I'm gonna say many of them again. I said that during the last meeting, and I got asked to not use that, but since this time, people are walking the neighborhood and having conversation about this. And every one of the abutters from where Fernwood meets Leo Drive to the top of the hill are all very much concerned about the amount of traffic, this little bit of a buffer of 30 feet, and anything to do with a sports complex because they are noisy. And I do know that because I have been a part of the Gardener Chair City Travel Program, the Gardener Little League, and the Gardener Travel Basketball Program, from winter to spring, all the way through, a full year. And it does get noisy. You're on mute.
Muted, Trevor. You're muted, Trevor.
Thank you. I can assure you that there'll be many more meetings prior to anything moving forward on this site.
Thank you.
Certainly gonna be a lot more opportunity for public input.
Whoever's mic is open. Muted. All right, next up is Tracy Fluid, Flue, forgive me if I butchered your name, from 450 Leo Drive. You have a question about traffic. Hello, Tracy. Okay, well, she typed out her question into the chat and was how will increased traffic be addressed?
And when the time comes, um, we'll have to determine whether we do a traffic study or not. I don't think we're planning on doing one, but, um, we don't really know what, again, how the fields will be used and, but yeah, I mean, if that's something that, uh, we end up needing, we'll, we'll end up doing a traffic study. I mean, it is a costly endeavor to do that. We'd have to factor that into that we utilize.
Okay, and that goes back to, uh, the fact that this project is in its embryonic stages.
Should, um, I figured out how to turn my mic on now. Shouldn't we be looking at what the traffic will do to the neighborhood before we decide if this is a good idea? The only reason at this point that you would go into the neighborhood is if you live here.
No, not really. I mean, if I was going to go walk one of the trails, that's what I, that's where I'd go. I'd go to park here and walk the trail.
Walking a trail is a lot different than Olive Garden youth soccer coming to the neighborhood on Saturday morning.
I agree with you.
So shouldn't, shouldn't we be looking at that before we decide if that's a good idea to have soccer fields?
So again, I'm going to, I'll, I'll repeat myself when I said earlier at the beginning, this is a concept. We, we don't know if it's going to be built out or not. This is what we've developed as a concept plan based on the needs of the city. If we go, move ahead, if the city decides to move ahead and build this out as shown or some other form of recreation fields or recreational facilities, then yeah, we'll have to do more due diligence as part of that build out. Maybe including another, maybe including a traffic study. And associated, but we don't, we're not going to determine that now.
I don't think you should waste time making a plan for something that's not appropriate for the neighborhood. Because you're spending money to build a plan for soccer fields when that might not be appropriate for the location. They're making plans for that. They're spending time and money to make plans for a soccer field.
For recreational facility, yeah.
All right, next question is from Nancy Mansfield. Ms. Mansfield, could you, uh, what's your street address, please? You didn't include that.
Yeah, sorry, uh, two fifty-two Leo Drive.
Okay, what's your question, ma'am?
Yes, um, it's been somewhat addressed, but I would, I would believe that a project of this size would need to have a formal analysis done for, for the, to determine the need for it. I mean, if, when you, when you built the city, new city library, when you're building new schools, anything of, uh, this magnitude, I mean, I know this isn't a school, but I, I would think would need to have a formal, uh, analysis study done. I, I don't, I have not yet heard, it's been said that there is, uh, there's, this is based on, uh, needs of the city, but I haven't heard any concrete fact about how that need, how the conclusion, uh, how that was, you know, how that conclusion was made, that the need for an athletic facility, athletic field, particularly in, behind an existing neighborhood. Um, and just to comment on, I think it was Mr. Cormier who said, wouldn't it be great? You know, if people in this neighborhood, they would love to have this in their neighborhood. I, I can say, uh, no, I would not. I would rather go across town to an athletic field than to have this in my backyard with, with the noise and the traffic. And I don't think it's appropriate in, in, in an established, uh, tight, uh, neighborhood such as this. I'm, I'm totally for the walking trails and natural playground, small playground. I think we should capitalize on the beauty and then the natural surroundings, but not something like an athletic field.
Hey, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Raymond Richard from three fifty-nine Leo Drive, have your question, sir?
Um, yeah, my, uh, my understanding was, uh, I tried to help when we did the field at the, um, at the foot, at the high school. You know, I called every counselor and the, the thing is, was I forget what it was, four million or something, but we have a nice field for the football, the soccer team, the band, track. We got stands, we got, I mean, I didn't understand what the concept of putting that, the soccer fields out there when I thought that that was what the, the, what the city had paid for, what we were putting up there. And then also with the idea that the, the, the elementary school is going to be built right down the, the street from the high school. I would think that there'd be better alternatives for the kids to, to have fields or something in that area versus this area. That, that, that was my only question.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone exclusively on the telephone that wants to ask a question? Who was not in go to meeting, was, uh, just listening on the phone? Going once, going twice. All right, thank you. Members of the public, appreciate it. All right.
So excuse me, may I ask one more? This is Steve McCoyack.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, has the police department evaluated this plan for security and line of sight viewing? Because that was one of their, uh, major concerns when I was on the youth commission working to put the skate park originally in Greenwood Park. They objected because of the line of sight viewing, it was so minimal. And Jackson had better viewing. This type of park basic gives them no line of sight.
Uh, I don't know, this might be so, uh, early in the process that that might not have occurred yet, but, uh, Trevor can answer that better than I.
John, do you recall if we put this in front of the, um, development review committee? It's been a while. John Allen, are you still there? There's, I, I, I don't know the answer to that, uh, Steve, I'll, I'll get back to you on that, though. Um, I, I can't recall whether we just went in front of the development review. And or uh, I know it didn't go before the traffic commission, which if you look at the site in the entrance ways into the site, it's probably the best one. It's at, it's at a cross from Margot Way, which is, you know, another street. It's not on a curve. It's, and it's, yeah. So I think the line of sight there is pretty good.
Well, with two houses, with two houses on either side of that entrance way, I'm, I'm sure that those two neighbors are going to be asking you for some type of buffer zone there as well, which is going to minimize when the police drive by to see anything into there. And I know because I live three doors up from that entrance. And Nancy Mansfield, who was on, lives two parcels up. So it, it's very minimal right now because there are pine trees lining that area right now. So I'm, I'm just, you know, building on what I guess Ms. Fluid said. It does appear that there should be more work before this even be, is voted on.
They're voting to support the concept, it's not the project itself. Again, the city will determine over time how it gets built out. It even gets built out this way. I mean, it may get built out, it's going to get built out in phases. So, um, you know, that's going to be determined over time. It's the concept, it's the concept that we've developed. And to the question from, um, Mrs. Mansfield is the, it's been identified in the open space and recreation plan. That's the plan that we identified the need for recreational fields in. Um, every other playground in the city has recreation fields in it. And they're all in neighborhoods. I understand your concern, but that's a fact of the matter. And this, whether it's recreation fields as you see on this plan or some type of other recreation field, you know, that's what we've envisioned for this area. And again, maybe not the regulation soccer field, it's probably not what you envisioned, obviously, a few that have spoken tonight, but it's something that the city has identified as a need. And we tried to work it into this open space and recreation plan. We've, uh, conceptualized here.
Hi, Trevor, this is John. All right, I was having trouble with my, uh, microphone here. Uh, and our response to the question about if this has been in front of the police or emergency, um, yeah, we had an initial meeting with this concept and, and, uh, chief of police were, were there and, um, people from the fire station as well. So they've seen this, uh, concept, um, so they're aware of what's going on. Um, but there's been no official plan sent to them for review.
And going forward, there will be a lot more meetings and hearings on this. This issue before the planning board tonight is just whether or not the board approves of the concept. Not a full-blown, uh, groundbreaking tomorrow morning project, just the concept of a recreational area in that location. And having said that, is there any questions or comments from the board or, and/or I will entertain a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Paul Cormier again. Yeah, I just want to clarify that I'm in favor of the phase one, which is the access road, the walking trail and the, and you know, the so-called parking lot for this recreation area. It's like we mentioned, phase two, phase three, that's probably far off in the distance. And the soccer field might not ever happen. But I am in favor of proceeding with this to start anyway, in this phase one project. So the people of Leo Drive, uh, don't get too concerned that I, because I'm voting on this thing is not, I'm not voting on the soccer field at this time. I am voting on the phase one, just to get it going, access field, play, walking trail and whatever.
Well, what we're voting on tonight is whether we approve or disapprove of the, uh, the overall concept. Is it in accordance with the city's recreation and open space plan? It is. But again, this isn't, uh, this isn't approving groundbreaking tomorrow morning. This is do we approve of the concept? So again, if anyone cares to make a motion or have any further questions or comments from the board members?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the concept of this recreation area.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second from Steve Cormier.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board?
Well, I understand the, uh, neighbors' concerns for it. And I believe there is a need for a recreational area in that part of the city. There were a lot of children there, a lot of people that have grown up over the years. And there is no recreation area in the immediate of that area. So I think it, the city is going the right way and at least coming up with a concept. And just to get it started, I'm in favor of it.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Lard.
Thank you.
All right, next item of business, Wilderbrook subdivision petition. Now you're clearing your screen, Trevor, I'll give you a minute.
So we're up to the petition, Wilderbrook, um, the city in, in February, the correspondence from, um, Henry Cormier's attorney, uh, Lashir, um, regarding the Wilderbrooks division. As you all know, um, Harry is, was the owner of the subdivision. He since sold off all the lots, I believe all the lots have been constructed or in the process of being constructed and completed. And, um, he's requesting the return of his, um, bond, sixty thousand dollars change. You see, I don't know if you've all had a chance to review this document, but the third page starts to petition where he's requesting not only the return of the, of the bond, uh, he's also requesting that we keep seventy-six hundred dollars of the bond. Cost of all the lots that he owns right now as with, in conjunction with the, um, house lots that he owns. Getting back to when this was originally, actually when it was amended into two thousands, the city, um, asked Mr. Cormier to create a housing, um, association for the neighborhood. And that, that association would be responsible for maintaining all the easement, drainage easements in the property, in the development. He does not want to build out, well, none of that money has been collected to date, so, um, because the association was never initiated, so to speak. There was never an initiate the association to maintain the drainage easement. So it's never, it's, it's, it was never initiated. No payments have ever been collected. He's requesting that the planning board rescind the two cul-de-sacs that have not been built and the related, um, lots within those cul-de-sacs. Again, the, he's asking the board to keep seventy-six hundred related to those, um, lots. For two hundred dollars apiece for future, uh, maintenance costs and, um, he's also asking to rescind the requirement within, within the, um, subdivision amendment. And been asking for the balance to be returned to him. I've been in contact with the city solicitor. He's recommending, and he's, he's actually told them, uh, Attorney Europe that we hold off until a new administration is in place before we proceed with this matter. And so I, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. It will be on, you know, it'll be something we have, we'll have to address in the, in the and we did receive the letter in February, I just wanted to get it on the agenda now, so the board's aware.
All right, well, thank you for the briefing. I think we'll, uh, for my, my part, I think we'll, uh, go in accordance with the city solicitor's advice. Need any questions or discussion from the board members?
I agree.
Okay, good. All right, at this point, I'm going to reconvene the, uh, public hearing that began on April twenty-eighth, the Tempeany Crossroads LLC Site Plan Approval Amendment Request. Trevor, you, uh, received questions and comments from the public that you were able to, uh, respond to in the interim?
Yeah, I had one conversation with, um, Deborah Aspen, um, after our last meeting, but I have not received any other comments or questions, um, on this project. No, Ms. Aspen's on the call tonight. On the, yeah, go to meeting tonight. But, um, I think I addressed all of her concerns. I think I addressed all of her concerns.
Are you asking me now? Mr. Chairman, are you asking if you answered my question?
Uh, Ms. Aspen, is that you speaking?
Yes, this, this is Deborah Aspen.
And what's the street address?
324 West Broadway.
Okay, very good. Did you have any further questions about this? Uh, I know you've been in contact with Trevor.
I asked specifically about the elevation. And I don't think he was able to determine that. And we were, I believe, going to wait to see if we could get that from the developer and/or the architect.
Can you specify the elevation you're talking about?
The elevation of the drive-through. Remember, we were having a conversation about the headlights.
And I told you that the elevation of the drive-through is below the roadway, I like three to four feet, I believe.
Right. Yes, and that there would be some sort of barricade and or uh, wall that would be built and/or eventually that other building.
Vegetation.
With vegetation, correct. Right, I just wanted to confirm that. So is anybody there who can confirm?
Mr. Chairman, you want to open it up to the engineer who's on the call?
Yeah, I was looking for him. There he is. Yeah, Mr. Hannigan, could you address that place?
Yes, um, can I have the screen to bring up the plans?
Sure thing. Should have it, Bill.
Yeah, okay, so these are the site plans here. Um, and I think this is Miss Aspen's property in this area here. I will zoom in.
That is correct.
Um, the drive-through, right, so the drive-through lane is right here. Um, the proposed grade in that area, um, I will go back down to. This plan here, which shows the proposed grade in the area. Of the drive-through. The drag here, sorry, look at. Just got a new router too, that doesn't seem to be working too well. So the area where the drive-through lane is, this is, this is the way that this concrete path where the order board would be. So the elevation there is about 117. Um, the elevation, the finished floor of the building in this area is about 116. So if the lights were coming across this area here, they would either hit the building. Or, or basically be around the garage, or the, I'm sorry, the, the grade of the building in here. Um, so I think that what we had talked about was placing some vegetation in this area here. Um, to address lights both uh, on the neighboring properties and down the street. Um, and that will be reflected on the um. On the landscape, which is still in development um, for the project. So that, that I think is the area that we're talking about right there, that we'll be placing some additional. Screening vegetation in here to, to do twofold, to protect any, I, we don't know when exactly this building is going to get built. So if lighting comes through here, it would be protecting this building in this area as well as um. Uh, lighting uh, for, for the traffic. But I feel that the, the offset to the road is probably more important to that relative to the elevation. We spoke about that in the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. That answered that question.
Did you have another?
Uh, yes, I do. As far as a, does anyone have a timeframe, given the parameters of, you know, what's happening right now? With everything being shut down, uh, are you going ahead? After, um, I guess, this meeting tonight? And I'm assuming that this is the final version of this plan. But is there a timeframe for construction?
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Still.
Okay, so the, the governor really kind of holds the cards on this, um, as everyone's looking at next Monday as being the day he's going to quote. Uh, release us from captivity. Uh, but the, the idea basically is it depends upon how, what phase uh, commercial construction falls within that. Realm of uh, the whole COVID um, concern. So the, the idea is to get the construction ready. And we would love to start construction, um, you know, in, in a month or two. Uh, but that's going to be really dependent upon what uh, the, the state allows all of us to do relative to work on, on the project. It may, it may be that we don't start construction on the site. It might, it might be that we start construction, the site work in the summer. Get that squared away and then pause for the winter and put the building up in the spring depending upon what happens uh, with how things pan out. But the objective would be as soon as we're, as soon as we're done with the approval process, we would like to get going in construction. Um, and if it's permissible by the, by the state, we'll move forward as such.
Okay, thank you. I know you can't do any, anything more than that because you're going by what the governor says.
Correct.
Are there any?
I'm all, I'm all set for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Trevor. You're muted.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Um, so a couple of things tonight, I just want to. Over, as we, as you can see on the agenda, um, we need to, we, we have an amendment request for the site plan. Which basically the resetting of the building on the site, the um, redesign of the parking area, the inclusion of the drive-through. Um, with that one building. Um, and then also we have the special permit for the drive-through. So. Those are two separate things the board needs to look at tonight. Um, and you know. If Bill has anything more to present, if the board wants him to. Represent briefly the plans for the site plan um, amendment, and then the drive-through. Um, and then, and any discussion, and then move forward with a, with um, closing the hearing. Eventually taking a vote one way or the other.
Okay, is that amenable to the board? We run through this uh, again quickly to refresh our memories. If Mr. Hannigan would do us a kindness?
Okay, with me.
Okay, so um. Thank you for your time. Um, so as we talked about at the last meeting, um, the, the changes that are made to this portion of the site is essentially we, we kept roughly the same footprint. And, and slid it to the, to the west um, to allow for the drive-through lane to come through. And also we shifted parking from the. The west side of the building to the east side of the building, um, as well to kind of down south the parking for the building. Um, the drive-through lane and it's um, it's, that's on a previous sheet, I think, which kind of details what we're doing on the drive-through. Just, this kind of is, is really the, the change that we're making is basically the config, reconfiguration of the building and parking in this area here. Uh, we end up with actually uh, more than enough parking for all three sites on the property. Um, we have excess of, of what's required for the, under, for the project, under the ordinance. Uh, with, uh, I think we have somewhere in the order of um, I went back to the previous plan. But parking, I think we have 40 or so spaces extra um, above what is required. So what's required under the ordinance. For parking is 145, and we have 181 provided on the site. Um, right now is 126 existing spaces that were constructed as part of the 99 project, and we're adding an additional 55. So there's a lot of extra parking on the site. Um, down in this area here, um, there's uh, there's ample parking around um, this building here, which was approved under a. Modification earlier this year, early, maybe late last year, uh, for this piece right here. Um, and we feel there's a, enough parking around here. We talked about it at the last um, meeting, the drive-through lane, the escape lane, the deliveries, um, how we working that whole, whole thing out, how we updated the drainage. Um, the drainage has been, has been reviewed by uh, DPW Engineering. The traffic has been reviewed by DPW Engineering. Um, made some changes and improvements, what we feel are improvements to the traffic within the site. Uh, specifically this area was, it's currently basically just a sweeping turn that allows anybody free traffic through that area. We're gonna basically construct it a little bit by adding soft signs and crosswalks. Um, to basically uh, allow better pedestrian movement and safer pedestrian movement within the site. With respect to what we've done since the last meeting, the, um, and this is probably more related to the special permit, but one of the questions that came up at the last meeting was relative to trash receptacles. Um, and the ordinance requires that we have them in the drive-through. Um, so we've added that on the plan, sketch plan to be incorporated in the approval, basically. Um, at, at this car area here prior to the actual pre-menu board and order boards, where someone comes in and they have something to get rid of. They can get rid of here. If someone comes in and drives all the way up to the drive-through or drive-through, you get order board and orders. And then goes through, and they have something they want to throw away, then we've, we've added one in this side too, so that way. You know, either before they order or after they order, they're able to get rid of, um, get rid of trash out of their vehicle. The other thing that we talked about at the last meeting, meeting was um, the concern relative to the entry. And potentially cars pausing here and, and, and backing out on the Tempany Boulevard. So what we're proposing here is to add a sign that says no stopping allowed in driveway. Uh, we, we trying to figure out what language would work and, and I think that the word stopping. Um, provides, so if you stop there, they can tell you just to move along if, if, if the city gets involved. Um, and then hopefully if, if there's a backup and they realize that I'm supposed to stop here, then they'll either circle around and come back the other direction or, or. It might, it might pull in and, and, and walk inside instead. Um, so that was one of the other questions, requests that were in, um, looked at at the last meeting. Um, the other thing that was asked about was the specifics on the signage relative, I'm sorry, the drive-through size relative to the menu boards. Um, this is the five panel menu board. Um, and it's a, a center panel which is full-size, and then, then two side panels with half. Uh, menus on them. Um, the dimensions of these, we were, were not available at that last meeting. So we have information now that's been provided uh, within the, and I'll bring that up in a second, but that's been provided within the email with Trevor. Um, then this will be the pre-order board, which is also a split screen. Um, to allow that, um, the square footage of the, of the display area and the, and the overall size of the screen have been provided. And this is the actual order board, um, which this will be the pre-order board and the, the five menu, a five panel menu board, um, in, in pictorial person, um, book. I'll kind of zoom in on those a little bit more. Um, we, we showed you these in general uh, at the last meeting, but now we have dimensions on them. The, the main order board, which is not a very good picture of it, that's actually the board right here. The other thing that they have is they have a canopy. Uh, a canopy basically rises up alongside and has an overhang. Um, basically for weather protection and if the person's ordering, um, it's, it's something that uh, they recently incorporated within their um. Within their um, documents. Um, if I go to. Email that I sent to Trevor way back when. Um, these are basically the criteria of the uh, pre-order board. The height is five feet five, and if you, if we're, we're considering it being on a um. A concrete base, it might be six inches off the ground, so that's six feet, uh, which is still below um, the, the maximum. Um, the five panel menu board would be about the same height. Um, and the, the canopy of the um, of the order board is, is approximately 10 and a half feet on, on the concrete base. Um, so that, that's something that we would need the board to approve as part of the special permit would be the additional height. Um, Trevor, what's the, what's the cap and height? Is this seven feet? Do you like stuff?
He said that, I'm sorry.
Seven feet, thanks.
I, I read his lips.
Yeah, so, so the seven feet is, is these, these, the pre-order and the five uh, manual board make it, the order board makes it, but when we add the canopy. Um, section to it, that's when, that's when it, it, it um, it goes above um, this part. The, the, the canopy, I mean, the order board itself is down here, probably the same height as the other structures, but when you add this structure to it, that height goes above. Um, so we're, we're presuming it's going to end up being, they, they're saying, um, this is about nine and a half feet. Um, let me go back to that email. Yeah, it's about nine, nine twenty feet, 117 inches, and that's, I'm, I'm saying that, you know, when you include a, a base for it, it might be a little higher. So I'm, 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 I'm basically saying 10 and a half feet, just to kind of. Make sure that we're, we're going to meet the height when we're all done. Um, the second criteria is the total square footage. Which the square footage can be looked at as two different ways. One could be the, the sign area, which is really the um. Um, the area of the sign versus the message area. So the, the sign area is the outside perimeter of the actual sign structure. Which basically is 48 by um, I think it's nine. I thought I saw that here before. I think it's nine by four, basically. So that gets us to um, the size of the sign for the five panel menu, menu board is actually 36 feet. But the display is only 23. There's a steel border around the uh, the TV screens that they use to protect them. So if you add up the, the 23, the seven and the seven. Um, you're, you're actually below the 40 square feet that the, the ordinance allows. However, if you go to the outside and you talk about the full sign area, and, and I think that that might be the way we do it, just to be conservative. You would end up being at 60 square feet, uh, because the sign, the sign exterior, the exterior is, is bigger than the actual display area. So. What we would be asking for is for the um, the allowance for three signs versus one. The allowance for one of those signs to exceed the seven-foot height requirement. And allowance for the total square footage of the sign area to be greater than 40 square feet. Uh, with based upon these dimensions of being approximately 60 square feet, noting that the display area is less than 40 square feet. Um, so I think those are the things that we need to have somewhat incorporated within discussion. Um, to make sure that everyone's on the same page with what we're proposing. Um, this information has been submitted and now is part of the record. Um, the other thing that we submitted was the, um, the small directional signs uh, relative to how, how they're doing the, the. The entries and, and exits relative to the site. And those are shown um, on the plan. Get the right sheet. Sheets. So those signs would be located in this area here. Those are the directionals that you would see. It would be thank you and exit and enter. Um, which we would have one in this area here. Um, and one in this area here. Basically just uh, their standard signs for entry and exit. Okay. So the only two items that are still um, out there on the, the punch list of things to deal with. Are the uh, the, the final landscaping plan, uh, which will include the um. The landscaping along this side of the property, along with the screening in this area of the property. And basically giving more definition to the plantings that we're showing um, in the area of these two buildings. in the area of these two buildings. We did this with the ninety-nine restaurant where we submitted a general plan like this and then we followed it up with a more definitive plan that had the number of species, the type of species, where they were replaced, et cetera, based upon how the construction was looking towards the end of the project. Once everything was graded off, then we had the landscape guy come in and kind of, you know, massage what our ideas were. So, that worked out well. I'll ask Trevor if he agrees and we can continue on that. And the lighting plan I did send out, the previous lighting plan was prepared and I'm just waiting to hear back with the changes that they would make relative. We have poles that are in this location by, from the old plan and now we're moving things around. So, these are all the light poles in this area that have been removed and relocated. But the lighting plan would be similar in nature to what we have already approved based upon the previous plan. This update reflects its building location and this additional parking in this area here. So, it should be pretty much the same, but just a different, different location of the stations themselves. So, we would, we would ask that those be, the landscaping and lighting plans be conditions of approval that the, that the trash sketch be included as, as part of the plan documents that are approved in private instruction. If instruction said we'll have these items added to it, we'll have this item added to it, et cetera. So, that's what we would ask.
Any questions from board members? None. Thank you, Mr. Hannigan. Trevor, I don't see any voting on my agenda vis-à-vis the site plan approval amendment.
Yeah, well, if, if the board decides to close the hearing and meeting tonight, after you close it, you can choose to vote on it. Yeah.
Okay. I thought as much. I'm just used to seeing it on the agenda. I have to have a list or I get lost. All right. I would ask now, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to be heard in favor of this project, this proposal?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry. Before we do that, do you want to just open it up for any additional questions from the public?
I thought we, oh, no, that was just one. Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you, Trevor. Any questions from the public once again? That feature to start, name and street address? Or if you're on the phone? I heard somebody pipe up.
It's Deborah Osborne again. I have, I just have a question to clarify the lighting because his mic was breaking a little bit when he was explaining the reconfiguration of the poles on the side of the property that is closest to my property. So, if that could be addressed again one more time by Mr. Hannigan, just having to do with how the configuration of the pole, the light poles are changing from what was designated before, I just, I couldn't hear completely.
So, the lighting on this, in this area here is not changing. There's an existing light here, there's one here and one here. This lighting is not changing from the original approved. With this light here is not changing. This light here ends up in the middle of the new parking lot, so that's gonna be relocated here. And there's a couple of lights that are not in ideal positions in this area here, as well as just when the middle of parking lot here. So, these are gonna be relocated and we may be adding some lighting on the backside of the, of the drive-through, but nothing really near your, your property.
How many lights are there total? Just for safety's purposes, I'm just curious. I don't know how to read these maps as well as I should be able to. So, do you happen to know offhand how many lights? On poles?
How many lights are gonna be on the property?
Around the building, around the first commercial building and...
This one here? The smaller one?
Yes.
Cursors?
Yeah. Yes. Well, he can clarify for both buildings if he has that information up the top.
The lighting in front that's there right now is gonna stay just the way it is.
Okay, great.
There may be some, there may be some security lighting, basically on the building, just over doorways, et cetera, around the side, but there wouldn't be any whole mounted lighting in this area at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
I...
And we may address the lighting that we need in this drive-through area with just on the building lighting as well. We may not need any additional pole lighting because there are existing street lights along this stretch of the road. But that's part of the analysis.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any questions in the chat box. Anybody else on the phone? Going once. Fair warning. All right. For the second time, anyone here wishing to be heard in favor of this project proposal? Anyone here wishing to be heard in favor of this project proposal? Hearing none. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard in opposition? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard in opposition? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard in opposition? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. All right, next up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hannigan. Do you want to take back your screen, Trevor, before I continue?
Sure.
There we go. All right. So, on the table right now is to entertain a vote about the site plan amendment request, approve or disapprove. Any discussion among the board? Trevor, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, if the board does see fit to move forward with a vote tonight, I would recommend certain conditions on the site plan amendment. Are you interested in me reading them out now or do you want to wait until the board discusses and decides to take them off?
Well, two that popped up to me was landscape and I believe lighting was the other one. But I'd, I'd be happy to hear your list.
So, you got two of them. The third one would be, they need to be in compliance with special permit findings and conditions that you'll either disapprove of after this. Such condition we add into the site plan.
Okay. So, the caveats on this would be landscape lighting and the conditions of the special permit. Any discussion, Mr. Coughlin?
Yeah, one additional one, if I may.
Please.
I'd like to see a copy of the executed and recorded agreement between the owner of the three parcels. And what that shows is the easements as well as the agreement for operation and maintenance of the utilities and stormwater on-site. And I've spoken with the lawyer for the proponents, so they're aware of the document and I've seen a draft copy so far.
Okay.
The chairman?
Yes.
Relevant to that request, I would just ask the engineer each parcel that's been parceled out on the site on the ANI that Chris is referencing, whether they have adequate parking for each facility. And if they don't, they should have parking easements. And that might be the case already. I don't know, because I haven't seen the agreements either to make, to, to ensure that there's sufficient parking for each building.
Okay. Board members, questions, comments, discussion?
Move the motion.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Cormier.
I say move the motion. Looks good.
You're making a motion, sir?
Yes, I am. Make motion when you approve the conditions, what the conditions attach.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Trevor, you have another comment? You're muted.
The engineer, please confirm about the parking. I think you're still here, right?
Yeah. The, the parking on the site is, like I said during the presentation, there's more than enough parking on the site for all of the proposed uses, for all of each individual buildings. There's probably about fifty percent available parking for each of them. The ninety-nine building has plenty of parking on that lot. The agenda building and the Williams building have about sixty to eighty percent of their parking requirements. And there is gonna be a cross-easement relative to the parking adjacent to the ninety-nine that all three parties will have access to. That's all part of the document that John is preparing. I think Chris may, I'm not sure if he has that in that particular part of the document, but it is part of the overall easement prop for the project.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next is the special permit. Now, is that, is that still being composed, Trevor?
Yeah. So, I sent a draft out to everybody to look at and really the changes that I can see, Bill touched on pretty much all of them except for one. I will add additional documents on, on the first page, on the description. Bill sent me a couple more documents showing the trash can locations. In the base, the entry sign sketch, I'll add the documents. And then, the waivers, I don't have on here, but again, Bill touched on all of them. I don't know if he touched on one of them, no, but... So, the waivers they'd be asking for that the board have to approve from the design criteria, I think, would be section three B, two G, one, two, and three, which is one being the the one sign, there, they have three, as opposed to one. Two be seven-foot limit and the forty-square-foot limit on, on all the signage. You get sixty square feet for the signs rather than the forty. And then, three would be signs and speaker boards shall be physically shielded from any public street in residential properties by landscaping or other means. I think Bill touched a little bit with the landscaping, but you really can't put real landscaping along that side of the building in the street, along the street there. I think it would be more of a danger than a, than a... And both might have a couple of comments on that one too, that you want to mention as far as, I don't know how you would screen those boards because they're all gonna be looking right out the west Broadway from the street. Really, this room over there is very limited. We're putting some lower vegetation over there, but nothing high enough to get the five-foot.
Well, then, with those open items, a special permit vote would be premature, wouldn't it?
No. All you would do is you'd go on the special permit with those waivers allowed in the special permit. So, the planning board has authority to waive those features of the design criteria.
Oh, I see. I see.
If you were an approval of those, waiving those, that criteria, then you could take the vote with the waivers right in special permit. I have a spec plate for it right at the, in the second to last page, page five.
Yep, you're right. Any questions or discussion from board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Paul, excuse me, Paul.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure that Mr. Hannigan and his staff have been very cooperative so far with everything we've asked from the city to do to them. And I do make a, I like to move this also with a special permit with the waivers. So, I'll make a motion on that, please.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Next meeting, Tuesday, June ninth at seven PM. We all good with that? Our busy schedules?
Hopefully, we'll be at the City Hall.
That would be nice.
All right.
All right. Very good. All right. We're all good with that? Mr. Bettis, I believe you're on.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passed. Thanks very much, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good night.